Good morning. It's Wednesday, July the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, nine o'clock. Actually, nine oh one. I started a minute late. I apologize. And Kirk County Commissary's Court is now in session for a budget workshop. And I think we're going to, as I look down here at the agenda, we're going to handle the P- handle the P D O today or?
Monday.
Monday. Okay. So volunteer fire departments.
Judge, I, well, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say it's page one of your booklet.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I found that page.
Page one of your hymnal.
Oh, since I've kind of laid on for these, for the volunteer fire department, I'm kind of like supposed to stage here a little bit. And uh.
It's the usual suspects, isn't it?
Pretty much, pretty much. We got a few of this in, I think, but it doesn't matter. They're all in here together. And uh, one thing I want to say, and boy, we didn't learn in February how vital these guys are. And the winter storm, there's not a doubt in my mind, these guys saved lives out where they were. We had, they were making welfare checks. Our county people didn't have four-wheel drives to do it. They did everything under the sun. And you know, next time it might be, that was out west. Next time it might be Center Point. It might be Ingram. You know, our best resource here in the county is our Waterloo River. And that thing gets mean and ugly sometimes. So we don't know what's around the corner.
Quickly.
Quickly, very quickly. And after the winter storm, we had some meetings Doug put together. Did an outstanding job just for everybody to figure out what their resources are in times of need. And I don't think there's a person that didn't go to these meetings that didn't learn something. One thing we did is we designated the volunteer fire departments, because they're spread across our county, as resource centers for any time of need, no matter what the disaster is or emergency. That's where people should go, rather than trying to come all the way into Kerrville, all the way into Center Point or whatever. They, they go to the closest V F D. So we got that. And not a one of them backed up being designated that way. I'll say that. Since I've been watching things, going over the budget, I can tell you now, maybe I didn't think that two years ago, that every one of these guys have run their departments different, but they manage their monies responsibly. There's, they have more needs than what we give it on. And they panel it great. Some of these have E S Ds. Some of them are applying for E S Ds.
All right.
E S Ds are not a save all. The two that are applying for E S Ds now, having it on the ballot in November, as soon as they would see any money would be October.
Next year.
Twenty-two.
Right.
Yeah. So even with them, I can tell you right now, I know, because I go to the E S D meetings, as many as I can. And I can tell you right now, Mountain Home, theirs is basically earmarked, everything they get from the E S D for about the next ten years, right, solid eight and nine, you know, is it, Brian? That's gone. I mean, that's what it goes for. It doesn't matter if they blow out tires or whatever else, ruined tires. That money for the E S D is already spent for. So we have that list in front of us. And I'd like for everybody to look at the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty actual. And you can write this number down. What we gave the volunteer fire departments that year was two hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. That's the vol- all the volunteer fire departments. What I'm proposing is the seven main volunteer fire departments to bump them up to thirty-two thousand this year. That's a pretty significant increase. Terre Linda, eleven thousand. Castle Lake, four thousand. We go from two hundred and twelve thousand, one sixty-five in a pre-COVID year to two thirty-nine this next year. Guys, that increase is less than one part-time employee we have. We've got buildings scattered across the county already in place. We have people ready to help whatever comes up. And I think that's justified.
Let me go back. Right. And I've said this before, but a few years ago, and I'm, I'm agreeing with everything you're saying. But the fire departments never came in and asked for anything. We kept pushing it on. Okay? So now you're asking for more. I don't hear them asking for more.
I took.
Wait, wait, let me finish. I don't hear them asking for more. Okay? I hear E S Ds, and I'm not arguing, I'm just saying, your responsibility is, is, you know, financial also. Okay? So in the past, you said, hey, you know, give us whatever you want to. So we gave it to you and gave even more than what you always thought you needed. Even though I think when I'm in with it, it was like county was given about fifty percent of what you, what you needed to operate your facilities with. Probably more than I know. E S Ds, when I look at this, we've got Center Point and Turtle Creek asking for twenty-four thousand. But if it comes C S, E S D, if it gets elected or approved, do you need that money? And I think Don just said it's not until October twenty-two. So it's not in this coming year that you'd get the funds, even though the election would be.
This November.
This November. So is that, is that correct? Is you don't get the money till then? Bob Reeves is shaking his head yes.
Right. It's on the November ballot. You get it at the end of October. If it's on the May ballot in twenty twenty-two, you'll get it in.
Okay. But it's gonna be on the November ballot. Right. Yeah, right.
It has to go out with the tax bill after it's passed. So that, that's a long time lapse.
Right. That's what the ballot has to pass.
So therefore, it's, it's, it's valid to have the request in for this next year for Turtle Creek and Vol- and Center Point. Because what I was gonna say, if it, the money's there, put it in contingency. Okay? But, but it's, it's a moot point. You don't get it. Got it, got it, got it, got it, got it. Okay, got it. One other question, if I may. There's zero in for Hunt in Ingram. Why is that?
Well, there wouldn't be this year coming in. That was last year. You remember the workshops?
No, there's no request for this year.
Well.
No, that's, 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 that was my budget. And I took that.
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking, Judge, I'm looking at requests. I'm looking at yours. There's zero on both of them, unless I'm making a mistake.
No, you're not making a mistake.
Okay.
But uh, I think that is just a mirror of what I did, pretty much.
Does Hunt want the funds?
That's what I'm.
Well, do you want it? Do you need it? Not, not, you love it. Do you need it? Okay. There's a difference.
There is a difference.
Yeah, you're asking, you're not loving it, you need it. Okay?
May I recap how we got there?
Sure. Okay.
Uh, two years ago, when I was talking about volunteer fire departments, we were talking about what we have to do, what's mandated and what's not mandated. Several of the fire departments had reserves enough to get through. And that was two years ago. Last year, we didn't do anything because it was COVID. And we didn't raise anybody last year. So that's why you got into two-year cycle. And I think that's where those reserves got used up. Am I mistaken? And we appreciate that what you volunteered to help us do back then. But we also recognize that you may have burned through some of that, that reserve.
But at the same time that we did nothing, we had that storm hit and.
We got a double.
Stress put on these departments.
Yeah. So the, I'm just focusing on requesting. So the request is not zero for Hunt and Ingram. It's twenty-four four, correct?
I just requested thirty-two. And the reason I did that, I kind of took the bull by the horn, Commissioner Mosher, is because I'm their liaison. I've talked to Brian a good bit all the time. Charles from time to time, all these guys from time to time. And I, I kind of got my finger on the pulse. And they didn't specifically ask, I did.
Well, but I'm trying, I'm trying to, I want to explain, Commissioner Moser.
Okay.
This column over here is the one that I put together.
I understand.
This over here only differs by about three thousand, not, not, just a couple of twenty dollars, two hundred, no, twenty thousand dollars is what it differs.
I'm looking at zero.
But, but I don't think the requests were turned in.
No.
What Don's talking, well, I'm just, I'm just telling you, I don't think this reflects their request. I don't know where the requested column comes from here. Where's it come?
You're both right in what you're saying.
Right.
You're both right.
Okay, so the request is thirty-two thousand.
Yes.
Right.
That's, that's.
And, and what Don's requesting is not on this spreadsheet at all.
No, it's not.
So that's, that's why you're not seeing it there.
Okay. I'm not, I got that. I'm just trying to understand why it's zero. I think you explained.
That's probably my fault.
But once again, guys, you didn't request it. If you don't request, you don't get. Now, three years ago, nobody was requesting anything, but we gave it to you anyway. So here again, and we love the volunteer fire departments. But part of your responsibility is requesting what you need. And, okay? I'm not talking to you, Charles, you've requested. I'm talking to Hunt and Ingram. Okay?
I just submitted a document last year. We have some traffic last week was falling on Highway thirty-nine. I just sent a written request for assistance with that. So we didn't request somebody.
Anyway, this is not in here. So, okay. Okay. So anyway, the request is thirty-two thousand across the board. Okay?
One modification I'd like to say to that. Castle Lake. Castle Lake is a small, visible corner. I think that's too small of an increase for them. I think that should go to, go to four to five thousand. It's a small fire department, but they do handle a very remote area of the county. And it's a very, they're critical to our, to us.
Location, location.
Yeah. Because if they have to rely on Turtle Creek or Center Point to get there, it's an hour drive. Forty-five minutes. So there, there is backup certainly. But anyway, so for that one. Overall, yeah, I agree with the increases. And I, you know, I look at the volunteer fire departments as almost as a, as a branch of us. They have always stepped up when we've had a, any kind of emergency to help each other. There is a fire, I remember where it was the other day, it was somewhere, I think, off Turtle Creek or somewhere in Kerrville South, and pretty much every fire department is there.
Everybody is there.
So, you know, they provide a huge service to the county. Another thing that we don't talk about a lot is the first responder part of it. I mean, virtually all the first responders are volunteer fire. And that's something that's in a different area. We don't really put a lot of fun into there. But again, that's something that we support. And I kind of roll it all into the volunteer fire departments. Not all of them are, but a lot of them are.
The only other thing I'd say is, is going from twenty-four four to twenty-four, let me run it, to thirty-two is a thirty percent increase. That's a big increase. So from a public standpoint, you know, we all love the volunteer fire departments, but a thirty percent increase is a big. If everybody came in with that kind of increase.
I agree.
We'd be in, we'd be in a world of hurt. So.
All of them.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go for it, but that's, that's a big increase.
I agree.
Okay.
And, you know, I don't see that each year.
I don't know what your basis is for thirty percent increase. What's the basis?
Saving lives. You hang out.
Oh, come on now. Saving lives. That's, that's.
Their location.
Unlike apple pie, too.
They're, they're extension of the county, in my view.
Thirty, quantitatively, why a thirty percent increase?
I think they need it. I think they deserve it.
Quantitatively, that's qualitative.
If I can't say, a few of the means that we had, you know, last year, the year before last. I think most of us had came in and showed y'all, you know, kind of what our expenses and things are to be acquired. Like my insurance and my department's from two thousand dollars. So, I mean, I'm not sure exactly what we should have brought today. I would have brought whatever y'all liked.
It's not what we like, it's what you need.
Right. So with us, with R D, like with Center Point, with Center Point, through the snowbath, we did a hundred and two calls in six days. We took firewood, propane, gas, whatever we could find, food to people that we bought personally through our department to give to people. We got a lot of donations. We have chicken eggs. We got, there's a couple of processes in place in Center Point that we got food from to give to the elderly. Some of that stuff is just hard to put on paper to, to show a need.
Charles, what I'd like to see, and I think the public would like to see, is what have your actual expenses been for the last three to five years? By the way, you don't have them here today. I'm just saying, that would help quantitatively say, look, this is how much we're going up. You know, the stuff we get from the county is flat, but this is what our expenses have been. And I bet you they've gone up a lot. So that, that would really help, help, I think, all of us to say, yeah, you know, we, we undersupported you in the past. Now let's try, and what Don's, I think, saying is let's try to catch up. So that, but you understand what I'm saying. It's not what you did last year. It's what you did actually in your expense for the last three to five years.
Right. Just because I, I agree with people. Like I said, the means that we had, the actuals that I brought in were five years back.
Yeah.
Kind of show y'all where our budget was and everything like that. So that way y'all can kind of see the basis on what we're getting from the county to the base of what we have to spend. And where we are behind as departments.
And that's what, that. Okay. I think in the future, that would be very helpful if each volunteer fire department could show, you know, don't spend a lot just because that. But show what your actual expenses have been and what the revenue from the county is. And then, and I think, and I don't disagree with anything Don's saying or what you guys are saying. But it's just, you know, there needs to be something, if somebody asks me why you need it, I'm gonna say, well, we love them. Um, you know, we love everybody.
Like I said, that's what we did for all the meetings for COVID. And it's not gonna base.
You just talked about last year. I'm talking about five years.
Two years ago, they showed us all that information. Then we skipped a year. So here we are now. We just skipped one year is all the time. So these guys all laid their, their books bare to us.
That's from one.
That's one year we.
No, no, it's from one volunteer fire department.
No, that was from all of them. All of them presented that information.
Well, anyway, that's what we need is part of the budget.
Now, gasoline is up about thirty percent. You guys use fuel, right? You got other expenses that have gone up. I'm not saying your overall budget is up thirty percent, but I know darn well your fuel costs and some of the other stuff, which means that when you have to upgrade your equipment, when you got to get training, all of that stuff is gonna be more expensive if you got to go out of town on the road. So I just wanted to know that I, just, just taking a dart and throwing it on the board and saying thirty percent increase. I agree with Mr. Mosher that it should be on, you know, based on something. What's the inflation rate? What did we have to spend last year and so on? But I don't believe we ought to be pinching pennies. I believe you ought to have a little wiggle room, because this is important stuff you're doing. Some of the departments that want increases don't save people's lives and property.
So what's our?
We get that. But so do we want, I don't think we need to come back to it.
Yeah, I agree.
As a, as a rule going forward, just as a rule of thumb, it'd be a good idea to say our, our increase was this much in terms of percentages going forward in the future. If that would be acceptable to everybody, I think that would be helpful to anybody that's sitting up here.
I agree with that. I agree with that.
Okay.
I know we had problems a couple of years ago about receipt turning in. Is there any other issues?
No. That was mainly one department, and that's been replicated.
So I'll actually get to see, everybody can see what we're turning in for universal, correct?
If they ask for it, yeah.
So, okay. So, so Don increased it by twenty-seven thousand. Jonathan, you increased. By, well, one thousand. So it's twenty-eight thousand. So I guess the bottom, the request, the request is, is eleven, nine, one million, four hundred and ninety-one thousand, six hundred dollars. I guess something, ten years.
I'll refer to ten years.
Yeah. That's okay.
Before we get away, I would, I would like to say something on the record.
Can I clarify something? I thought you wanted to bump up Castle Lake to five thousand.
Five thousand.
From four to five. So that's, well, I've got three.
It's threes in.
Well, I know, but that is the number I, I set out when I started talking.
Give us what your request is.
I, I did. He got it.
Okay. So it's now one million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand. I'm sorry, Judge.
I just, I just want to state on the record that I really appreciate everything that's happened over the last couple of years. We came to you and talked to you about what we're required to do and what we need to kind of voluntarily do. And everybody responded promptly. We did, Charles brought his budgets in. He's telling the truth. All of this stuff happened. We got cooperation across the board. Some of the volunteer fire departments were not able to forego that payment two years ago. And we understand that. And we cooperated with that. Some were. And for those of you that did, we are very appreciative. And we're sorry that we got caught in this, this pandemic and everything with, with the last budget cycle. Because we didn't give anybody any raises. We didn't do any new hires. We didn't do, we didn't change that budget a bit. And you got caught in that process. And it has nothing to do with what your needs were at the time. And what it ended up doing was stretching those that were flush at the time to being not so flush two years later. And we understand that. And for those of you that were bare bones honest with us two years ago, when we came in here and we got this, worked it down to what, uh, twenty-four four for the ones that got it, which was a cut from the year before. We appreciate that, but you got caught in the cut two years. And so while there is a current need, I believe, some of this is also in recognition for the cooperation and service that you provided to the county. And we are grateful and thankful for that. And there'll be no pushback from me on any budget for volunteer fire departments this year.
I'm good with it. And I, I think just putting for perspective also, if, if my number's correct, one million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred. That's only a thousand dollars more than your actual two years ago. So that's good. That's a thousand dollars more. So that's, that's been requested.
I, I think it's more than that because we added two additional volunteer fire departments. My number.
I'm just looking at what your numbers are. I'm looking at actuals that you gave us and what's being requested today. So the math is pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Okay.
You guys, anybody else have anything?
I would like to see.
Won't you go to first?
Brown, I'm the mountain home fire chief. Carfa president, I would like to add one more item, if y'all would, to the budget. We, in Carfa, we, two years ago, we put together a swift water rope rescue type team. As of right now, we have nine that are certified for swift water. We have fifteen that are rope rescue.
Is that countywide?
That's countywide. It's a countywide deal. So what I'm requesting is if y'all will give Carfa five thousand dollars. Because the problem that we have is, is it's a budget item. It's something that's not used all the time. And each department is having issues of sending people for training. So the ones of us, we spent the money out of our pocket to go. But my intention of this team is to make it way bigger, which is gonna be a full countywide deal. So it's gonna benefit for everybody. So out of the seven departments, we'll all work together and we'll accomplish what needs to be done. So I would like to see if we can put a little bit of money for Carfa to spend to send these guys to training. So.
What, what's the training cost?
Each person has been the average of three hundred and thirty dollars per head for swift water, Westwood is rope rescue.
So please, we say five.
What is it?
Two seventy-five.
There's three, three phases of that and there's three phases of swift water.
So on swift water, you have two phases of swift water. And then after that, you have two phases of bo hops for the three.
So each person, this, before you pay for fuel and lodging and everything, is gonna spend right at the thousand dollars a head?
Well.
Is that what I'm hearing?
There's none of us going, there's none of us going next weekend to do some swift water training. And we got smart and we're getting a house because hotels right there are three hundred and fifteen dollars a night in the brothels. So we're getting a house and some of us are gonna sleep on the floor and stuff like that. So not only, I mean, the, the money for the training is not the big deal. It's the hotel. There's more too, because we can't do it here in Kirk County. So that's not gonna get everybody certified, but I'm hoping that every year that we can get more and more. And of course, hopefully some departments might be able to pitch in to help on that. So.
So it, is every one of these courses a, a three-trip thing, or you can qualify for three different things?
Each one of them is.
Is each got its own certification?
Yes.
Right. Okay. So for less than three hundred dollars for the actual course, you can be certified for one thing, then another, then another. So if you get all three, that's your thousand bucks. Before.
It's three thirty a day. It's three thirty, it's two, most of them are two-day course. So it's three thirty a day.
A day?
Yeah.
Okay. Now we got real expense, which is six hundred and sixty dollars.
Fast, fast one is three days. Fast two is two days. Bo hops one is three days, bo hops two is two days.
So five thousand dollars won't pay for a lot.
No. But I'm not gonna be greedy. You know, every little bit will help. That's the problem that I'm having is some departments. That's the problem that I'm having is some departments just don't have the money to. That is a special ops type deal. It's not something that happens all the time. But when it does happen, uh, it does need to be needed. Uh, you do have to have certifications to do that. In order to be part of the team, you have to have all those certs or you can't be part of the team. So, uh, we're working with Kerrville, with their team too. So it's, like I said, it's just not one side of the county, it's the whole county.
Yeah, oh, draft, whatever for this type stuff.
In the long future, yes, we, that's where grants are gonna have to come in. I mean, it's not gonna ha, it's not gonna happen overnight. I've been working on it for two years. Um, we slowly kind of, each department's bought some equipment. I mean, we're, you know, we're, we're talking about vests, helmets, boots, wet suits, dry suits. There's a whole lot into that, but equipment, we can try to go after grants for that.
Ron, you mentioned seven of y'all, but there's eight fire departments.
Well, Castle Lake.
No, I'm talking about the seven major ones.
Yes.
I wonder if you're not including, I mean, the eight major ones.
Sierra Linda is one that's kind of.
No, Tierra, I'm not counting Sierra Linda or Castle Lake. If I count the numbers, there's eight of them. And I wonder, is Comfort included in that?
Well, pass is no longer.
Okay, El Paso is no longer.
And yes, Comfort is included in it.
Do they not have, I thought they had a swift water rescue out of Comfort. Well, it doesn't change what you wanna do.
So they do, but it's expired. Every three years, our certification has to be redone. So there's several of us that were already certified, but our certifications went, went, you know, expired. So we're having to redo them. So some have them, some don't, but they're part of it too.
Okay.
Don, what's the request for Sierra Linda?
Ten.
Eleven?
Eleven.
Seven, ten, eleven?
So how much equipment needs to be purchased for this one?
Just training. Well, as of right now, the nine that are certified, they are all equipped.
So those are equipped, so along with more training and more teams.
We'll have to get more people equipped.
Or more equipment.
You know, there, there's more to this, but it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a slow process. To be honest, I can sit here and ask you for $50,000 and that's still not gonna cover it all. But my main goal is to try to get people certified. And then each department can try to go and, and get grants. Uh, I do plan on trying to go through Carfa to get some grants for that stuff because it is gonna be ran through Carfa to put it, it's putting it all together.
One point, if, let's say y'all have nine people certified now or to some degree, right? Within three years, all of those are gonna have to be recertified again.
Yes.
So it's gonna be an ongoing deal.
It's, it's an ongoing thing.
We did this for, we did this for a year.
I think this is worthwhile. I mean, I know the, currently, I'm correct if I'm wrong on this, but really the city of Kerrville is really heavily relied on for the rest of the water rescues. And the odds are, if we have one, we're gonna have more than one. It probably spread from the eastern part of the county to the western part of the county. So having a larger group certified is amazing and important.
Yeah, we may never have another winter storm, but we're gonna have floods from here on out.
No question. Okay, so next year, come back with a better need for water rescue.
He's just asking for seed money.
No, I said for fat, I, I agree with that. I don't have a problem with that.
So.
The, the other thing that I would like to bring up, uh, I know there was discussion about radios, communication, uh, with constable and Wilkie. Please leave us in mind that if changes in Kirk County happen with that communication, please involve us in that because if they change over to a different system, that is really gonna put us in the bind if that happens.
I think we need to have a workshop on communication.
Okay.
Okay.
Just please leave us involved in that because that's gonna be a big impact on us.
Gotcha.
So.
I agree with Mr. Moser on that because I think that, you know, other counties are changing and doing things differently. I think we need to look at where we are and where we need to go.
There will be a workshop and, uh, I've got, I'm working with the sheriff's office right now with sheriff. Uh, we're gonna have a meeting to sit down and talk about this. Uh, LCRA wants to also come in and make their pitch. They think they can save us some money on the trucking costs.
Precisely.
Uh, and, uh, we're looking at, trying to figure out if our, uh, ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan funds, will cover these communications. So, um, it's a, it's a much more complex issue than just one constable getting the new radio. And so we're gonna handle that.
I'll do something totally different. It's gonna be a complete countywide problem.
It's okay.
We're human, we make mistakes, but we're not that stupid.
Thank you, thank you.
Going back to this, can you, would we just add a line item? Or.
It's gonna have to be a new line item, I think.
Carla, yes.
You might be able to put it in that emergency expense or maybe up there in the pool of allocations. I don't know. I looked at the line items.
We can add a line item for Carfa and put dash what it's for.
Let's not have an item that we say later, what was that? Let's make sure we, we have too many of them.
I know. And, 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 and just to be clear, in that, you know, we cover the cost of the class? Are we covering hotels?
We're, we're just giving them seed money. They're, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna spend a lot more than what we're giving.
Okay, it says Carfa on it.
See, if we did this for everybody that came in and go through real time like this, we'd be here for three months. So that's the reason it's important to get this stuff to us timely, please.
Problem.
Okay. So we're, we're 1-4-9-8 now, 600. Okay, ballpark, your number. Anyway, I don't want to argue that.
And, and I've got to note that we can work on the BFD process in order to request their funds when we ask all the other departments. I think that would solve a lot of that.
Good idea, thanks.
Okay, anything else on volunteer fire departments? Again, thank you for all you do for us. We really appreciate it. And thank, thank you for the two new ESDs, that helps too. It's good policy. Everybody I've talked to, when I went to, uh, your fundraiser on Saturday, they really liked the ESD.
That's good.
All good. Okay, well, moving on, then the next item on the agenda would be county policy review. Or what, what's when?
Page 12 are the general provisions. I don't know if y'all wanna start with that or just go ahead and let Jennifer look at some of the policies.
Thank you. Thank you. See you guys later.
Let the record reflect, Sierra Linda's in the house. Get in here with me. In the notebook, we've got Roden Bridge on page two. And do we need to revisit them at this time?
And some of that was in case y'all wanted to talk, the, the sheets that are between one and 12 are just kind of a recap from last time's.
Well, we had a discussion, I thought we had a discussion on aggregate. Everyone come back and talk to us about aggregate.
Well, I don't think.
Roden Bridge, yes, and she's here to discuss that. I've got it next, but it's kinda out of order, but we can go in whatever.
Well, I'm just going off the agenda, so.
Yeah, let's get the numbers out of the way first.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I.
And let's go to page two, which is Roden Bridge. And what we had highlighted in that was the aggregate cost, asphalt and oils.
Right.
And then, uh, trying to remember, was there a capital outlay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
What kind of three, three things we have to talk about?
For the last five years, um, in material costs, they're, I just grabbed one of each. One of each, though. We just got one year. There's five years in each of those packets.
Oh, we gotta take them apart and ask them.
No, okay.
Eric, did you get one, one of these done?
No.
This one?
Thank you, sir. There's, that's these on.
We're gonna pass them, the number of them down.
I know that you said a workshop on the radios, but, uh, Roden Bridge needs to be included on that too. Different probably style radio, but we have two-way radios that you no longer can purchase and they no longer service. So when you have that workshop, um, Roden Bridge probably needs to be included.
And that's why we're saying we wanna be all inclusive.
Yep.
Felt a little ambushed when we stumbled into that one.
Yep.
How many are we supposed to have?
Five. I think the first fiscal year that, uh, the oldest is 17, 18. And it just kind of goes.
Okay. Now I gotta find the years.
On the top.
Okay.
I'm missing, I have four. I have 17, 18, 18, 19, 19, 20, and 20, 21.
We should have a 21, 22.
It's probably here somewhere.
I'm sure it's passed down here somewhere.
We should have.
Oh, here it is. I've only got four though. Where'd you start?
17, 18.
You got that?
18, 19.
Got that?
20, 19, 20.
Got that?
20, 21.
Don't have that. Who's got a 20, 21?
I have, I'm still missing 21, 22.
Okay, 21, 22. The X ones are.
Twenty, twenty, there's 19, 17.
This task was entirely too difficult for us. I want you to keep that in mind. We need code coding.
What, what do you need, 19, 19, 20?
21, I need 21 and 22.
21, 20, 21, 22, here we go.
There we go.
Let me get one of those too.
Has everybody got all five of them?
No.
You got 21, 22?
This, this is for Jonathan. But all, all the X ones.
That's what I'm doing.
You didn't get yours there. No, I've got it. I think I have five.
Okay. So look at the first number, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21.
Okay, well, if you go back to 17, 18.
Stand by, stand by Kelly, we're still sorting here.
And it really helps to get these in advance so we have a chance to look at them before we get up here.
Sure.
Because we're not gonna be able to process much of this data on the fly.
There's 17, 18.
Okay, where do we start?
Well, if you, if you look at the 17, 18 budget, you can see your cost per mile. This is based on a 20-foot width. Um, we have some that are less than that. We have some that are a little bit more than that. But on average, that's a pretty good planning number. Um, your cost per mile back then was $11,742 per mile. Current year, the one we're in right now, fiscal year 2021 and 21, 22, it's $16,375 per mile. Um, over the course, you start to see where emulsions, it's mainly your emulsions. Some of the savings was when we switched from the black rock back down to the white rock. Um, that helped us fund the 50-mile-a-year program. Um, it's not getting any cheaper. Um, I was trained, um, with budgets with the previous road administrator to add a 3% on top of your rock and oil in case there is any price increases during the year that you'll have enough money to do your program. What I have done on that sheet, there is no increase. That is just based on the mile and the width of the road. So there is no buffer in there. If the prices go up this year, we'll just, we'll shut it down and we don't have any of the money left.
Kelly, are you going from white back to basalt?
No, we're staying with the white rock.
Okay.
That would add, um, about double on your rock cost.
If you want to basalt, but you did. That's, this is the white rock. Okay, good.
So per, per mile, we're up over $4,000, nearly, about 46.
Yes.
And change.
Yeah. Back in 17, 18, we were using the black rock. February 12th of 2018, we brought to the court the price differences between the two rocks. We also told the court, you need to get to a 50-mile program. You were currently doing a 25-mile-a-year program. We were on a 19, 20-year cycle. And in order to fund the rock costs, if we went to the white, because at the time it was exactly 50% cheaper, that was gonna cover your rock. And we started to have.
This is not apples to apples because we use different material.
Yes.
This is just straight up, here's the difference in price.
Yes.
For a, a good rock.
Yes, and if you look in, in 17, 18, the emulsion was a CRS2. If you look at this year, this upcoming fiscal year, CRS2P. It has a polymer in it. It's more expensive, but it has a bonding power to it that is much better than the CRS2. The last probably two or three years, we've had rock retention issues. That's been because of the oil. Um, we have met with the vendors, see if they've changed anything on their mix. They claim they haven't. What I think it is, is that things are being refined so much that I think it did change. The, the actual binding properties of it are not what they were.
Kelly, it's not just the oil, but we changed from the basalt rock. That basalt rock, when you look at it, it, it has a porosity to it on the outside that allows the oil to grab. And so the, the CRS2, the lesser oil, it doesn't have the polymer, would stick to that rock because the rock wanted to stick to the oil. We switched to the white rock, which is cheaper. It's got a smoother face on it. It, it doesn't have that porosity. Um, and it's a softer rock, so you wouldn't want it to have the porosity or it would crush to a powder very easily. So, um, that's the other reason, the polymer, and, and don't get me wrong, when they switched to the white rock, kept using the CRS2. Started to have problems with the rock sticking.
We also did start to have with the black, the last year we used the black. And I was like, we can't, you're just throwing money away doing this.
Kelly, let, let me answer you a question. You got a lot of data here, but let me, let me simplify. Let me just look at 19, 20 and 21, 22, 21, 22. And we'll just look at rock for 35 miles, okay? For both of those. So if I look at rock, rock and, I'm just gonna, and I'm just gonna say 19 rather than 19, 20, okay? In 19, it was 151,000, okay? And then, in 21, it's, you're asking for, or it's 181,500, 181,000.
You look above that, the price per ton?
Wait, 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 let me just go to mine, okay? I just wanna look at those two numbers, okay? So 151 compared to 181. So to repeat again, just looking at rock, 35 miles, year 19 and year 21. So I'm having a hard time understanding why the aggregate cost in your budget request is going from an actual of 100,000 to 259,000. And I'm looking, I'm looking Tanya's budget request now, okay? So the actual in 19 was 101,000 and you're requesting 259,000. So I don't understand that big increase when I look at your details here. Maybe it's, maybe it's a difference in mileage, Kelly.
Um, could be.
Well, what is it?
Well, I, I ran these numbers based on what the costs were of the material sheet.
Okay, but I'm looking at your budget request and I'm looking at what you just gave us. And it just doesn't compute.
I don't think the Mohammon's were the same.
Yeah, I don't think they were either.
Well, what were they then? What were they in 19 versus what are they in 21 mileage? Maybe that's the difference.[1718.33]
Currently, right now, it's between thirty and thirty-five miles, this current fiscal year that we're working.
What in your budget request, Kelly, what are you requesting for thirty-five miles?
Fifty miles.
Fifty.
Fifty, fifty. So what was it in nineteen?
Nineteen, it probably was less than fifty, it might have been. I, I honestly, I don't.
So what, what you're saying, and that could be the answer. Could be there's just an increase in mileage.
I think it was thirty-five miles in nineteen.
In nineteen. So going from thirty-five, so that, that would explain. Okay. That, that's good news.
Other year.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that's, that explains. Okay, good enough. I'm good.
So what I have done is I have pulled any increase to compensate for any unexpected price increase from either the emulsion companies or the rockets, usually the emulsion companies. I pulled that all out. So the numbers that you see on that twenty-one, twenty-two, there's no, that's, that's the cost. There's no extra energy, that's it.
So in a nutshell, you're telling us this is process due a business and they're doing it right without the problems we had with the.
And increase miles.
Right, exactly.
And the thing is, I can't tell you if we're going to be able to get fifty miles. It just, it's so weather dependent. It can be equipment, if we have a major equipment failure. But I do truly believe, based on how many roads and how many miles we have, to get us into that ten-year cycle, we need to shoot for fifty miles every year. If we have a really wet year, like we're kind of having, good thing is this year, it's only thirty-five miles. But if you have a wet year and you're trying to get fifty miles done, it can become a challenge.
How many years, when did we change or try to get to the fifty mile?
I believe it might have been seventeen, eighteen. It was, I believe it was when we changed road administrators. We started looking at the numbers and Charlie and I were like, we're more on a nineteen, twenty-year cycle. And we both agreed, we need to get ourselves more on a nine, ten-year cycle.
How many?
So that would have been about fifteen, sixteen, probably going into seventeen.
Black rock, too, that carry over to one of those years where you didn't have to buy aggregate because you had leftover.
Yes.
And I think that also is playing a factor here.
What, I guess where I'm getting at is, since we've been trying to get to fifty, what's the average that we've gotten to during that period? How many, have we ever hit fifty?
Um, yes, I believe we have, I think, one time. The other ones have been forty-eight, then we've had a forty-six.
Forty-seven or forty-eight.
Yeah. And that's including the road reconstruction, which usually will buy you about a mile or two of the ones that we contract.
So we've gotten pretty close to fifty. I want to make sure it was a realistic expectation, a realistic goal.
Yeah. I mean, it, I, I will tell you that it is hard based on the amount of staff we have. I really have tried to get this fifty-mile program going because I truly believe that's what we need to be doing, and I think that the taxpayers deserve that. But staff-wise, if we get a lot of developments in and they start wanting county maintenance and you start adding more roads, we already, we are probably past the max of what we really can handle. I'm pushing them hard on good years where we don't have a lot of weather. I can tell you what, you get to that last day of September, they are beat, they're tired. It's push, 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 push. We've got good weather, you know? And, you know, someday the court will need to be adding more to the Road and Bridge Department for staff. I've tried to hold off just to, I feel this is really, really important, get this in place first. But there will come a day, I think, that you'll need to add more staff. Plus, I'm having a lot of retirements that are happening, which slows our process a little bit, so. But we're plugging away on it. And I feel that if the court feels that they can't afford the rock and oil number, if you tell me what total amount you can afford, I will be able to tell you how many miles you're going to get out of that. And in the big picture of all of it, a fifty-mile program based on the number of staff that we got, we have, including the mechanic shop and the office staff, that is a lot of bills that come in, that's a lot of equipment breakdowns and, and things that need to be adjusted and changed on it. I really wish I could come in and present to you guys a twenty-five mile-a-year budget. It would be a piece of cake. We all earn what we're, we're making currently and be able to bring that in. It's hard doing fifty miles. I mean, there is a lot of push on it. But based on the numbers of what we have out there, that is what you need to be doing. Otherwise, you will never get out of this total reconstruction. You will never get out of that. Every year that we get farther and farther away from that ten-year cycle, each year you add another run to that list. And you never get out of it. And total reconstruction is four to five times the cost of just going in there and doing a maintenance seal. Where you go in, cut your brush back, recut your ditches, pull your edges, you know, repair your edges, put one layer of oil on, one layer of rock, next road. When you have a total reconstruction, you have to put two layers of oil, two layers of rock. And when you're coming back in nineteen or twenty years, there's a lot more brush to cut, the edges are gone.
And the base.
Yes.
And the base could be, have to be replaced.
Yes. So nineteen, twenty-year cycle is just, if you're going to run a nineteen, twenty-year cycle, you might also put the score fires down on the maintainer, rip up all your surfaces and, and just keep blading your roads. It's expensive to maintain them, but.
I'm good with aggregate.
Yep. So, I mean, that, that's what I have for you.
Let me ask you a question on the next page, Kelly. We may have discussed this the other day, but I don't remember. On line item, on guardrails, five sixty.
Twenty-one, nine fifty, is that what you're?
Six, twelve, five sixty. On guardrails. Am I looking at the right thing? So you had, you had an actual of twenty-one thousand in nineteen. And, and then it's been, now you're asking again for twenty-one thousand. Before that had been zero. Was that just a one-time deal?
We had a location out on Lacy Valley in Precinct Three that comes, you come off of Stonely or Cypress Creek.
Yeah, I'm just asking, is it a one-time, was it a one-time deal?
Well, I think so. But we would repair and somebody'd hit it again. And some of it is, I think, that the location of where the, the crash cushions are located are a little too far out, that's a tech stop project.
Well, here's my question. It used to be zero, one year jumped up, and now you're asking again for twenty-one thousand.
I just, that is basically what got spent that one year when guardrails got added.
Yeah, I know. But that's, that's my question, Kelly. It was a one-year event, so we need to do it every year?
Not necessarily, but if they start hitting them again, then.
Is that what you need?
I don't know what I need. Well, I don't. I, you know, if nothing gets hit, then it's zero.
Okay, so you had one year, you had a problem. So now you, every year you're going to ask for that same amount for that problem? That's what you've done?
Yeah. Well, then you guys tell me what you'd like to see in it.
Now, what do you need, Kelly? Not what we want.
I put that number in, that I felt that to have that stuff hit, that's how expensive it is to fix it. And it's not anything we carry in stock. So it all has to be ordered and.
It's a contingency.
It's a contingency.
Well, why don't we put in contingency then? That's what I do. Put it in contingency rather than putting a, see, because if you're there, it's just going to keep staying there. And if it's something we don't need, just don't put it in. But if we need it, then we'll put in contingency when current. Is that okay? All right, good enough. Thanks. Okay? It goes to contingency.
On the, Charlie, or Kelly, that's probably a further question. Where are we on the road repairs, eight hundred and thirty thousand? This is the budget for Shepherd Reis, I guess, isn't it?
That would be for Ranchero.
Oh, Ranchero, yeah.
The court authorized us a few weeks ago to prepare plans and specifications.
Right, but is that still a good number? There was a, I thought there was a, a question that you thought that number would come in less because the damage wasn't as.
Originally, we had one point three million. And so we, we got clarification from the GeoTech report that we could proceed with the existing bases out there at Ranchero and not have to remove and replace. So now it's at, at the eight hundred thousand number, eight thirty. That's a good number, to be a good number. Hopefully, we can find out what it really will be come October one. That, that's the goal, is to bid it and have everything ready to go so that it could be awarded October one in a new budget.
And that's just Ranchero?
That's just Ranchero.
And just a footnote that, we still are optimistic about trying to get FEMA to pay for that.
Yes, sir. I think everything was due June twenty-fifth. This is, now we're a couple of weeks away from that because they kept extending the deadline. And we're just, how long will it take them to review what we submitted?
I just want us, as accounting, not to take our foot off the gas. We're going after FEMA.
Kelly, or Tanya, Kelly, one other thing, this, this is not quantitative issues, but some of the things we just keep in the, in the budget line items. Lane Valley right away, Peterson Farm right away, or Highway twenty-seven. Okay, I'll just give you the numbers. Line item five seventy-two, five seventy-three, five eighty-one. Those things, they're all zero. Can't we just take them out of the?
No, because there's an expended, there's a bill pending, an invoice for around six thousand.
Oh, I see, okay. So it's got to stay there. Okay.
It's not zero. Lane Valley, I don't think it's going to be fifteen thousand this year. But next year, if we get that final piece of.
Okay, got you. Okay, so.
And we also use it for our, put out here, historical information so we can compare it back over the years.
Okay, all right.
So it rotates off once we rotate off that column.
I'm good with Road and Bridge.
Anything on capital outlay with Road and Bridge?
Not any additional information, Judge.
Kelly, I think I might have missed that workshop, and I did, I know I missed the workshop when y'all went over this. What's the age of our dump truck, please? I guess, I guess what are we rolling off?
Well, the one that it would replace is, I can tell you exactly what age that unit is. I think it's a two thousand.
That's what number comes along.
Two thousand or two thousand twenty-one. The tractors that we would be replacing, they're nineteen ninety-eights.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
And the broom is, here, I can tell you exactly. The dump truck is a two thousand one. The tractors are nineteen ninety-eights. And the broom, the road broom is a nineteen ninety-four. Twenty-plus years.
You surplus all those and there'll be some revenue from that. Thank you.
Okay. What do we have next on the agenda here?
Well, let's see, on page four, I've got a question. The little capital outlays, we talked about one point five million for drainage. I don't see that on here.
I've got it penciled in. Are we going to do this now? We talked about getting a grant, is why I penciled it in.
Well, we can get a grant on Ranchero Road, too. But we ought to put it in the budget if it's, you know, rather than counting on a grant. We've got to do something about that drainage. We can't put our head in the mud.
Yes, sir. When we, if we, when we get the grant, the auditor comes back in and certifies it as new revenue. And there's a local government code one-one-one, I think it's O two, O three, or something like that that states how you bring grants into the county budget.
What if we don't get the grant? That's what the budget process is about, right?
Yes.
That's the reason we put eight hundred and thirty thousand in there for Ranchero Road. Hopefully, get a grant. But if we don't, it's in the budget.
Yes.
So line one point five million in there for drainage.
We can add it.
Well, that's, that's, that's what we said a couple of weeks ago.
The problem with adding it is that it comes out of, I mean, it makes the, it increases the deficit.
I understand.
On paper, it looks really bad. You can't afford to pay for it.
Wait a minute, I don't know. We hadn't gotten to the bottom line yet. We've got thirty percent reserve. We cannot keep ignoring this drainage issue. County, state did theirs, they put, they dammed the road, they dammed the culverts, waiting for us to get it to the river.
Well, isn't the first step to do a study as to what, how, what we need to do?
Well, we put it in the budget. At least put it in the budget so we don't forget it.
Why don't we put that in the budget?
Wait a minute. We're going to, I mean, we had three feet of water off across Highway twenty-seven because we couldn't get the water off, okay? So now we're, you know, we talked about needing fire, I mean, water rescue because we get floods. Or we're going to get floods again. So are we going to just ignore this need? I don't think so.
Why don't we do what Jonathan said, put money for a study in? That has to be done first, anyway. We can't, we don't know what it's going to cost if we don't have a study.
Put the study and the work in both.
Well, you don't know what it's going to cost if you don't have the study.
Charlie's got an estimate, just like he's got an estimate on Ranchero Road.
I've heard it.
Well, we're going to have to hire an engineer to do, don't get me wrong, an engineer to do what needs to be done. I mean, and we, and we all have to figure out, and I, I lost Charlie, what, what that study will cost. And I think that should be done this year.
Anything to say, Charlie?
I think maybe what we should do is, is sit with a consulting engineer to find the scope and get a fee for them to do the engineering and then bring that back. And maybe that's what we budget for this year. And, and simultaneously seek the grant money.
We just, we just keep, we keep talking about it year after year after year after year.
Well, it has to be done right, so.
I understand that. So does Ranchero Road have to be done right? We don't have an engineer on detail on Ranchero Road, okay? So what's the difference?
It's the road that already exists versus you're going to build something new.
Well, the drainage that already exists is still good enough.
Commissioner, Ranchero Road, Road and Bridge does.
Ranchero.
That's their, that's their red butter.
I understand.
We got to contract out with somebody to do this drainage stuff.
But the drainage, we're going to need, we need an engineer.
Well, we've got a pretty, on, on the biggest part of, the million-dollar part of it, we've got a pretty good thing from Tech Stop what we need to do. And they gave us the engineering, they gave us how much, the width, the depth, and the distance. And that gives us the number of cubic feet of dirt we need to root. And we got to buy some property. We know what, we know what that is. Well, I think we're being remiss, just keep putting this on.
So what's the first step?
It's a real, it's a real problem. We talked about voluntary fire departments, because of potential for fire. Well, we got a potential for flooding again, okay? We're going to ruin a lot of people's property, okay, again. And I, I don't know how to answer that. You know, we just, well, we're going to study.
I think we need to prepare what it specifically has to, I mean, I don't recall that, I haven't looked at definitely what you're talking to with Tech Stop. I agree we need to address it, but we need to have something that we can bid. And we, and we don't have that right now. So we need to prepare bid documents for what the project is.
I, I agree with you on that.
You guys set up a meeting with a consulting engineer and the two commissioners of this effect and the three of us.
Sure.
And we sit with that engineer, be four people total. And then we could have that initial discussion of what, what is the scope, what are the areas, what's the finding?
Start with what Tech Stop gave us.
And it starts with what Tech Stop gave us and go from there. And just to reiterate, what we got from Tech Stop a few years ago was for one of three locations.
Correct.
And I think that one was somewhere between Sutherland and Center Point.
Now, that was, it was closer, closer to Center Point.
And then we know something needs to happen in Center Point around the mini-mart area through that drainage channel that goes under by what you can call Dave's Place.
Right.
And then a third location is further down into Precinct Three. Between Comfort and Center Point, there's a third location.
Okay.
And if we could have them identify all three of those locations and come up with a preliminary engineering estimate, what it's going to cost. My numbers were always very, very preliminary.
Okay, well, I just would hate to see us destroy a lot of people's property, number one. I'd hate to explain to the taxpayers why Tech Stop did theirs and then dammed the culverts and we didn't do anything. And that, that looks pretty bad from that experience.
But I mean, the overall process would be hiring an engineer, having them define the scope, having them define what drainage easements you, you need.
Right.
Then visit with the property owners about drainage easements and negotiating that. Then, then prepare the construction plan and bid it and construct it.
I understand the process.
That, that would be the overall process.
We got to start.
And to start, I think, what I'm suggesting is that we could have that meeting in the next week or so.
I'm ready.
During this budget process, we could have maybe a better number for.
Why don't you set the, why don't you set, set the meeting?
And do a number of what the engineering would cost, and that, that could be what you budget.
Set the meeting.
So my question is, what is the value of the Tech Stop engineering? Is that, would that be considered just a launching point for somebody that's going to be more?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it was a launching point. They, they did something very global to decide what we need to do at our highway.
Yeah, take that amount of water and send it to the river, this is what you need. At one point, at one location.
So it has value in this discussion, but it just gets us on the, it's starting to get.
Yeah, okay. So what, we should put something, well, after we're this week, then we'll put something in Tanya, in the budget for the preliminary work.
We will.
Okay, it's time for a break. I want to meet.
I'm good.
Let's come back at ten fifteen.
As we gather. Is Jonathan out there, Don? Jody, can you stick your head around the corner?
So, do we move a date? We're trying to get a meeting date.
I hope you win. Nothing's been agreed on. Okay, well, we have a quorum. There he is. Read it. So, the next thing that I've got is on page four, we'll start with capital outlay discussions.
Yes, and all this did was add animal control that's there in green, the $20,000 office building, and it also added the $25,000 for the pathway.
That flat rock part.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So, that, those are the only changes.
Okay.
And the next page five and six just showed those amounts being in what their budgets look like now.
In line items, yes. Page seven?
Page seven is the same thing. We just added the $19,000 in for the environmental health for the part-time increase. Page eight is showing what that is once it goes into our budget.
Let me get to page nine.
Page nine is the new hire request.
And all it's doing is giving us the total?
Yes.
Should we, I'll judge on the grant administrator. We talked about the possibility of just using somebody like Grant Works rather than hiring somebody?
We were scheduled to meet with Grant Works yesterday, and I was unable to do it, so we rescheduling that meeting.
Okay, good enough. Okay, good enough. Thanks.
So, we go to page 10?
Page 10, again, it's just a total. If you'll turn one more to page 11, those are where those numbers come into the non-departmental for right now.
Okay.
Just to show that there is a place marker for that.
Okay. For the new hires and for that grant administrator? And then we get to page 12. And that gets us back to county policy review. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And so Jennifer has gone over this and provided this update. It's, it's the, basically, it's the policy that goes in front of the budget whenever we put it online.
And this, this is what we had to call on when we were working on Lucy's problem earlier in the year, right?
Yes, sir. The, the only question I have is Jennifer helped me, and I think it's just been there on page 14, under one, it says childcare workers employed at the juvenile detention center. I think we can delete that now, or do we still employ some? Okay, we can delete that one then.
Which one is it again?
Well, you could, you could take out-
On page 14, under overtime, look at number one.
It's about halfway down, under section five, one.
Employed childcare, childcare workers at juvenile detention center.
We don't have child workers at the juvenile detention center, right?
We do now.
Well, you, you might take out employed at the juvenile detention center, just that line, but leave childcare workers in there.
Do we have childcare workers?
Might we?
I think all that, that was when we had detained young women who had children.
We still have a juvenile detention.
We don't have a facility.
We don't have a facility. That's why I'm saying this talks about a facility versus childcare workers. See what I'm saying?
That's what you're saying.
We do not currently have any childcare workers employed.
They're all volunteer with the, we have a juvenile detention, not detention department, juvenile probation department.
We do.
We transport kids.
We do.
If they have children, they go to CPS or their families. We don't bring them into us right now.
Law enforcement officer, well, these are childcare workers. These are not kids.
I know, but we don't, if you don't have kids, you don't need somebody to take care of them.
I know. No, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about kids that are being transported or somebody that puts in extra hours doing something like that. I don't know that that line about children needs to be taken out, but the, the facility obviously needs to be taken out.
Well, the way it's in here right now is it was workers-
Employed at.
At the facility. If we don't have the facility, we wouldn't need them.
So, you're talking about taking the whole line out from law enforcement?
No.
No, from childcare workers.
Is childcare workers employed at juvenile detention center would be the only phrase that comes out.
Okay. Well, I would just take out the part that says employed at juvenile detention center and leave the rest in because this is policy.
But if somebody's-
You take the facility out because that's obsolete.
Somebody's transporting something like the sheriff, okay, at juvenile, he's already covered under sheriff.
That's right.
It's not under childcare.
This is about overtime.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we don't, we don't have childcare workers. The juvenile probation officers are the ones that are transporting, so different job type.
We have discussions all the time where we say, well, we don't have any policy about that, all the time. Who's to say what we'll have in a few years and doesn't hurt anything to leave it there? It's said.
So, we're gonna have a policy for something we don't have yet, but I'm good with it. I just, I just wanna move on.
That makes no difference.
Well, we're taking something out that we'd have no longer. See, this is an example of how we have a policy for something we no longer have.
Sometimes we work like water, you know? We just have to come to our lowest level that we can all agree to.
We're fluid.
Right.
So, you're deleting employed at juvenile detention center.
Right.
That's what I would do.
Okay.
All right, so we're only, we're leaving in childcare workers and deleting the employed at the juvenile detentions.
Right. With the understanding that we don't have any childcare workers present.
Let's put an asterisk on it. If we should ever have any.
If we ever have them, we'll have a policy, don't we?
If we should ever have any, we've got a policy.
The public's learning how sausage is made.
Okay.
Okay, what do we have after that, Tanya?
After that, we're back to the employee benefits.
Okay.
What page?
16.
16, okay.
Actually, we don't have any handouts for the benefits.
Right.
No, but I've got props. You'll understand. Okay. Keep it simple.
It's gonna be like the cornea routine.
No, no, we did this in my office last week, and I said, this phone is this, and this phone is that, and we moved stuff back around. And I said, no, I went home, and I have made cards to be able to explain this to, well, the employees got confused, and we need to clarify it for them, and the public needs to understand what we're doing for our employees. And so, I wanna be able to explain it, but I want her to start it because she's the HR director, and she explained it to me.
And a personal time off, I've met with several of the departments and received quite a bit of input, and input from our subcommittee, but one of the complaints was is that the accrual, you lost like 10, 10, 10 minutes in a year. It went from 6.6, anyway, it was 6.15, and you multiply that by five a year, you lose 10 minutes. So, we rounded that up. We rounded 6.15 to 6.16 for a total of 160.16 hours per year from, from zero to 10 years. At 10 years, it'd be 7.7 hours a pay period for a total of 200.2 hours.
Back up, back up. Tell us what we're talking about.
That's what I want.
This is what we're accruing.
All right, which, which policy are we talking about?
PTO.
PTO.
Personal time off.
So, everybody understands we're talking about PTO, and the problem was that the decimal points that we were using lost 10 minutes over-
A year.
A year.
And you thought I was complicated and thinking.
No, you should've been there, you should've been here last Friday. We were-
We were trying to keep the numbers round, but, but yeah, we rounded up to 6.16.
So, so that the public under, the employees understand, and the public understands, nobody's losing 10 minutes this year.
Right.
Got it.
Right.
Number one. Now, what's number two?
Okay. And I just spoke with Commissioner Lesz, which he had another tweet that we hadn't previously discussed, so I'm not sure how to present this, but-
Why don't you explain the current sick leave policy?
We currently have vacation and sick leave. We accrue two weeks each of those per year.
I have a card.
Yes, sir.
I've tried to get where we've got it.
Shouldn't Jennifer hold those up?
Yes, she would, but, but this says paid time off.
Let me take them to her. You got, you-
I've got others.
You hold those in front of the camera, and all the people, it'll be on record.
No, I'll, I'll, we'll do them one at a time. Oh, and take this one with you.
There, you should go ahead and-
The FMLA, because this is important.
This is the visual aids.
Our employees have vacation benefits, and they have sick leave benefits.
And you're talking about it, hold that up.
And we're, we're getting ready to change that to personal time off or paid time off, PTO as we call it, okay? And on that card, what I'm showing you is the paid time off policy that Jennifer's gonna explain to us includes everything in the existing vacation policy that we have and everything that's in the existing sick leave policy that we have. So, we take the two of them, combine them, and you get, what is it, 160 hours for, four weeks a year?
Yes.
Whether you call it four weeks or you call it 160 hours, it's supposed to be the same. That's what you have, that's what you have under. Part of it is in sick leave, part of it's in vacation. Now, you combine it all into PTO, and you have the exact same benefits.
Right.
No loss of benefits, exactly the same.
Right.
Right?
Good explanation, next subject.
No, there is, there's a dish off.
I was trying to get it.
Of course there is.
I tried.
The other part is now, explain or go over the current policy on accrued sick time.
Okay, accrued sick time, you max out at 720 hours. Anything over 720, you lose. So-
And you, and that is if you, termination of employment for whatever reason, you do not, do not get paid for that?
Correct. And currently, the vacation time, if you leave, you get paid up to 160 hours, and that will remain the same.
Okay.
And the sick time, whatever is in the sick time bank will remain in that bank, the full amount.
Okay.
Correct.
Unless you leave.
Unless you leave.
If you leave, you lose.
Zero.
Right.
Yeah. And over time, that bank will be depleted as it's used, and it will not be replaced.
Right, and max is out at 90 days, three, three months, is that what I heard?
720 hours.
720 hours, whatever the, divided by eight.
And that holds up to FMLA.
Before, before we go to FMLA, I wanna make sure the employees understand because this all came up last week when somebody was standing at Jody's desk, my boss, asking her a question that I couldn't answer. And so, we met Friday morning until I could answer all the questions. Truthfully, that's what we did. This 160 hours, which is the combined sick leave and vacation, for younger people who don't have that much illness, they're gonna be able to take some of that PTO and actually have, if for all practical purposes, longer vacations. You're gonna have flexibility. This is not anything I had when I was a young employee. It gives a lot more flexibility to those people that don't use all of their sick time. But for the people that use their sick time, they get exactly the same thing today, get the exactly same thing next year.
Let me ask you a question. If somebody used it as vacation, okay?
It's time off. We're doing called vacation.
Okay. And then, time off, time off. And then they have a medical issue following, you know, later that year, okay?
Hold up the FMLA card.
Okay.
Because that's what I wanted, that's why I put it on a separate card.
If that happens, and they say, oops, I've used all of my time off, okay? So, now what I do, because now I'm really sick.
Well, if you have run out of leave time-
Yeah, I just made it, you ran out.
Ran out.
You're gone.
It's leave without pay, but the FMLA protects your job for 12 weeks.
Protects it? Talk about it, Jennifer.
It protects your job for 12 weeks. If you have a qualifying event-
Well, what does it mean, protect your job?
It's FMLA protection. If you have a qualifying FMLA-
What does that mean in terms of pay?
You don't get paid.
No, okay, that was-
If you appear out of time, you don't get paid.
We're talking about being paid, not, not for taking a job.
Right.
So, they don't get paid.
Correct.
If they used it all, then it's zero, and then if they get sick time off or time off-
Right, paid time off.
Okay, then they don't get paid.
Right. They can still qualify for FMLA.
I understand.
Before we get to FMLA, let me, let me answer your question, okay? That's what the accrued sick leave is for.
Right.
If you've got accrued sick leave from prior years, you fall back on that.
Right.
And you get it up to 720 hours over your, right? So, you can use up your, if you're talking about 160 hours of sick leave and 160 hours of vacation, and now called 100, it was 80 and 80, now it's 160 PTO, right?
Right.
You use that up, you fall back to your accrued.
Okay, and if you had nothing accrued, then you're-
Then you don't get paid. But that's why I wanted the FMLA card separate, because those are federal benefits, federal requirements, and we haven't touched that at all. It is exactly the same tomorrow as it was last year.
Got it.
And we have no control of it.
Which isn't dollars, good job protection.
Yeah, it's not dollars, correct.
So, as far as I'm concerned, PTO is a win-win for the employees. They have every benefit that you have today, plus you have the flexibility of how to use those four weeks.
And there's very few jobs that I'm aware of that you can accumulate four weeks of vacation or PTO in your first year.
Correct, yeah, no kidding.
That's, that's a very substantial increase in benefits.
We think that's a generous benefit.
So, going forward, we don't have vacation time, we have PTO.
And just, just-
Plus that extra 10 minutes, don't forget that.
Well, and it makes things a whole lot easier for HR, because it's just time off, yeah.
And just to make it clear, there will be no more accruals to your sick leave bucket. The sick leave that people currently have will stay in the sick leave bucket, up to 100, up to 720 hours.
That's a good point.
Once you go through that, no more. Everything that belongs to you resides in the PTO bucket.
So, there'll be the PTO bucket and the FMLA bucket.
You should have a bucket as a visual aid.
No, no.
Sick leave bucket, not FMLA bucket.
Sick leave bucket is money. Yeah, the other's not money.
So, you'll have the, the PTO bucket and the sick leave bucket, not the FMLA bucket.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you, right.
Okay, I got two hands up.
One, I just want you all to just clarify, because we wanted to ask, currently, we get an extra week after 10 years of service back. It's not really what they are.
No.
No. Same policies as we have in place today.
Right.
Vacation policies.
And then my question is, I don't think that there's many of us, but there's a lot of us that are exceeding the 720.
Right, that will remain the same. We'll continue to be grandfathered.
Okay, so that will stay in that little sick?
Yes, yes, may.
Yeah, and I understand that if you don't get paid out for 10 years, it's wanting to know where the additional from set of time-
Right, nobody's gonna lose anything.
Okay.
Bob, you had your head up.
Yes, as a county attorney, I'll try my best not to, let's say hypothetically, I have an employee that's, that worked, oh, let's say 36 years for the county, and has 720 sick leave hours accumulated. Would that hypothetical employee lose any of that with this?
No, sir.
No?
Currently, the hypothetical employee gets 160 hours of vacation time a year and what, 80 hours sick leave?
Correct.
How much will that hypothetical employee be able to accumulate now? Right now, she's, she or he has to use the 160 hours of vacation time annually because they're capped. And they're not accumulating any sick leave because they're at the-
Right. The, the maximum of the PTO bucket is 320 hours, because we're getting twice the, well, the same amount of time, but in the same bucket. So, we've doubled that, that you can carry over to 320.
So, my hypothetical employee would have 720 sick leave-
And then up to-
And up to-
320.
320.
PTO hours.
PTO hours. But that, anything accumulated vacation wise in this current fiscal would not carry over the next fiscal over to 160.
That's a question that I've had. Anything that's currently in your vacation bucket will carry over to the PTO bucket. The new policy for the maximum of the PTO bucket is 320. Nobody's gonna have that amount in their vacation, because we don't get that much. So, it, it, so, well, I mean, from last year-
Hypothetical employee could be-
Well, from last year, as of last 9/30, it had to be down to 160.
Right, but-
And that would be-
This hypothetical employee has been accumulating it during this fiscal.
Right, but they would only have accumulated two weeks or three weeks.
Or four weeks, if he had worked here for 35 years.
So, they're not gonna lose anything, anything that gets, and I've talked to that individual, and, and they're trying to give-
That's a hypothetical?
I've talked about hypothetical individual. Yeah, so-
Charlene hypothetical.
They're, yeah, I mean, we've had several that are having a hard time getting their balance down to 160 as of 9/30, and this kinda negates that problem that everything up to 320 of your vacation transfers to your PTO bucket.
And Bob, the intent of the policy change to PTO is to standardize things, and there will be hypothetical individuals like you're talking about, but they'll need to come to HR and work out those specific details. But the overall policy is nobody loses anything, you just gain the flexibility.
Right.
You keep all your benefits.
So, when that employee is out, when does the, you mentioned Commissioner about the sick leave declining. When does that start declining, after they've used the 34?
Whenever they use their, their annual, I mean, they use their, I would, I don't do that part of it, but they're gonna use their, whatever they have for the current year. I don't know if it makes any difference really.
I mean, if you're sick, you continue, and if you have time in your sick leave, then use the sick leave. If you exhaust the sick leave, whatever you have now, that's when you would go to PTO. Any new employees coming on aren't gonna have that sick leave bucket, it's all gonna be PTO, and they, they'll be able to use it as they accrue it.
So, when, I mean, in the hours this employee is out sick three days, why do I end on hours, starting off early first?
Sick leave.
Sick leave?
Yes, sir.
But what if that employee hasn't, just called in once he used PTO? They're sick, and then they use PTO?
And that's why we're trying to get rid of the sick, because those questions are gonna continue to come up.
Well, if you're gonna, if this is the bottom, Mrs. Dos, is I'm the one who asked you that question and put, and put out.
Right, if they don't have sick leave-
Or fill in.
If they don't have sick leave and they're sick, they use PTO. If they have sick and they're sick, they use sick.
But these are so, these are so specialized and individualized questions that they need to be handled one-on-one, we're trying to explain policy to all 300 employees, and this is just getting us off track. You're gonna have to answer those questions at some point, Jennifer, but I'm trying to make sure that everybody understands generally what we're trying to do.
It's a good question, because I can see how that can happen, but I know I read somewhere, whether it's under the FMLA federal policy or Kerr County, that somewhere I read that you have to exhaust all of your sick time before you can start using comp time, if it's a medical thing.
Right, right.
That gets used first. Now, I don't know legally if by law you can enforce somebody, if they say I wanna use PTO, I had a lot of touch on that.
Well, whatever the federal regulations are, whatever that is, we've got to comply. That's what I'm trying to tell all the employees out there.
I mean, it's gonna be to their benefit to use their sick hours to do it, because they lose those, they're gonna get up to 320 PTO, they get paid, that's when they leave. The sick time's not gonna get paid, so it's to their employees' benefit to use their sick time up, because those that have it, that's a great thing.
Right.
But it's-
Can I ask a question? Has the, Jennifer, have you got something that you can give to department heads to help them explain this to employees?
I, I have a policy that I've shared with the department heads, and it's, it's bubbles, you know, if this, then go here, this goes, but there's one, one change, because we had had a separate sick leave and a sick bank, that's one away, it's all sick leave now, so I need to update my bubble graph, so-
This is a policy book within itself.
This is, this is why we have a workshop today, because we were tired of bringing things to the court, then we changed the policy, changed the policy, the employees were getting confused. We said, we're not paying, we're not doing any more policies, we need to come to meet, and the five of us agree on what it's gonna be, then Jennifer will write it and bring it back for approval.
Right, and I can update them today and get this out today.
So, there's one thing left dangling out there, you said?
No, there's a couple things.
There's other things here on those little cards.
More cards.
But, but for the employees that are, that are watching YouTube, this YouTube is intended to be available to you to go back and see what we said and what we've agreed, and there will be some individualized questions, we recognize that, but we think they're best handled by doing it individually. We're trying to make sure that the employees, the rank-and-file employees, understand how this is gonna work.
And the departments that I've spoken with that understand it, they are all on board, they're very excited. They, they love flexibility.
Okay. What do you wanna talk about next?
What do y'all wanna talk about next?
Well, let's talk about the, let's talk about the longevity plan.
Longevity.
Okay? And I have, I have a card here.
Are they, you're both of them?
Yeah, both, both of these. And what, all three of them. She'll, she'll know what they are.
Exhibits A through B.
I had Post-it pads, I had telephones, I was moving stuff all over the desk to finally understand it, that's why I made flashcards. Let's talk about the old longevity policy. The old longevity policy was in years one, four, seven, 10, 13, 16, and 19, the employees got a 2.5% longevity increase in their pay, right?
Correct.
That's the, what we call the old longevity plan. That old longevity plan is no longer the longevity plan.
Right.
Take the market adjustment, we now have a new market adjustment plan. That's, and it's tweaked, but it's basically the same as the old longevity plan. So, if you would, Jennifer, just take that old longevity and put that market adjustment over it, because just slide it over the top of the card. Just take the card. I made them like tense, so you can just put it right on top of it. That was, that was the idea. Now, the other way around.
Wrong tense.
So, the, so the employees can see that we're just taking and putting a new name on the same policy with some tweaks. That's all we're doing. And the reason, that's okay, you put it in. The reason we changed that is because we learned when we did the salary study. The salary study was very illuminating for, for the county, for management, as, as we looked at it. Because what we found is, while we were always concerned that we were falling behind in our, in our wages, we weren't actually falling behind in the marketplace. our, in our wages, we weren't actually falling behind in the marketplace. We were much more competitive in the marketplace than we thought because of what we called our old longevity plan. By making those increases in years one, four, seven, et cetera, what we were doing was staying competitive in the marketplace. And so, and it was not a true longevity plan at all. Uh, what we, what it was is, no matter what your salary was, you were gonna get the two and a half percent increase on those three-year anniversaries. And what, so realistically, we concluded that what that was, was adjusting to market conditions. That's why we call it the new market adjustment plan. So if, if you're, if you're at home watching this, or watch it tonight, whenever you watch it, whatever was the old longevity plan, just start thinking of that as what we're now calling the new market adjustment plan. And one of the, the issues that we had with regard to that plan was it used to start after your first year, and I think most of us realize that, uh, very rarely do you work for somebody who gets two and a half percent raise after one year. You rarely learn your job in one year, you're not profitable and, and really, uh, returning services until probably your second year. So what our recommendation is, is to push that first two and a half percent increase out to the end of the second year rather than the first year, and leave the rest of it in place.
So instead of going one, four, it's now two, four?
Two, two, four, and we, we, we didn't change the fours and the sevens and the tens and et cetera, because we've got people out there, some of them have, they're one year away from their, would have gotten their two and a half percent, so we just decided, let's just make this easy, you are where you are in the chain, whatever years you've got, if you're expected to get something at year four, or year seven, ten, thirteen, sixteen, or nineteen, you're still gonna get it, just exactly like the plan was. The only change is, if you're coming up on your first year anniversary, we're gonna push that out to the second year because we think that's more equitable.
And is this for, in new hires as of ten, one?
This is new hires after October one.
Right.
If you get hired during this year, you're gonna get your one year.
Right, 'cause that's the policy you were hired under.
And there is one other change to the, that plan, we are removing the cap.
The cap, the cap was at twenty years, and that was done, what, a few years ago?
Twenty seventeen.
Since seventeen? As of twenty seventeen, you had twenty more years that you could get longevity. And so, uh, what we're doing now is we're just taking that twenty years off, so that this is a, a market adjustment plan, trying to keep our salaries competitive indefinitely.
And that was another huge concern of the departments I spoke with, that they were very, that they, they wished that the cap was not there, so they would be very happy to hear this.
And, and to clarify some of the confusion, some people thought, well, we're gonna measure it from when you, when you hired on fifteen years ago. Well, no, that's not what it was, it was adopted in seventeen, so it'd be twenty years after two thousand and seventeen. But we're taking the twenty off of it, so it doesn't matter when you were hired, uh, when you get that longevity, you're gonna get a raise, and that's, and that is a market adjustment.
And there are a few employees, very few, that between that seventeen and now, that will get caught up.
So my.
Why, why did we do that in the first place?
Because the, because we thought that it was a, a more of a longevity policy, not a market adjustment policy, it was, it was the philosophical difference in how we look at it.
So my question is, I ran the numbers for anybody that's currently capped to get that two and a half percent as of ten, one, or to get it when their anniversary falls FY twenty-one, twenty-two. And so.
I would say ten, one, I think they should get it, because they, they missed it up to now, they should get, be caught up at ten, one, and then they're back on their cycle.
Right. And the dollar amount to do that is about forty thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and twenty-two cents.
And that balances out for everybody forever.
Correct.
Good investment.
Good improvement, right? Now, the last thing is, we've dealt with the old longevity policy, which is now the new market adjustment policy, we've dealt with PTO, employees have lost nothing in our, in our, in our PTO, they've lost nothing with the market adjustment, but we now have a new longevity plan, new, new benefit, something you, you didn't get before, and this is the sixty dollar a year longevity. So you will actually receive compensation for the time that you stay here at the county, and that is an incentive to keep employees working and productive, and keep them here at the county and not taking another job somewhere else. So at the end of the day, after all the dust settles, with all these, these HR policy, policy changes that we've made, your, your vacation time, your sick leave, the same. The old longevity, we just changed the name of it, took the cap off of it, changed it from one year to two years, the same. And now we get to a new benefit. We have, are proposing a new benefit for the employees this year to go to an actual, real-life, working longevity plan, that you get a sixty dollar, uh, per year, uh, benefit.
After year four.
After year four.
And you have to have that fourth year anniversary by September thirtieth of each year. If you have an October first start date, you'll have to wait another year to get your extra sixty or your first sixty.
And, and we're sorry about that, but that would've been the way, that's just the way all of our policies work, or most of those magic dates, fiscal year dates. So that was the explanation that we have for the benefits, is there anything else we need to cover?
We, we have a, a philosophical discussion, which is really gonna be, well, I mean, everyone needs to hear it, but.
Before we start the philosophical, are we all in agreement on what we're doing?
Yes.
As, as a court? Okay, good, that's what I want.
Philosophical, uh, and I've spent far more hours on this than I ever thought I would or wanted to, probably.
It's cause you're a philosopher.
In the past, we have employees, we have exempt employees, and we have grade and step employees, and then we also had this category that I wasn't even aware we had, of non-stepping grade or open-range employees, and they were just somewhat arbitrary was their salaries were.
There's very few of them.
Very few of them, not a whole lot, but there were some, anyway, my personal feeling is that we should try to get everybody onto a grade and step policy. To me, I don't see why we should treat certain employees that are doing the same job at one department different than another department, they ought to be all three the same. That's my direction. I have had pushback from some of the elected officials that they disagree with that, those that have open-range employees, because they like the flexibility of being able to adjust those salaries, uh, internally, they keep their total line item, or say it's a hundred thousand dollars, they have two employees with fifty thousand, they may decide they wanna put one at forty and one at sixty, and they like that flexibility. And, you know, I, I am all for giving the elected officials department has flexibility, but I, I mean, that's an odd way to manage, but anyway, to produce someone's salary. But it's a court decision whether we're gonna force everyone into the same system or not.
Well, they're all county employees.
They're all county employees.
Well, and let me, listen, I wanna be a little bit more descriptive, because what we're talking about here, this all started back with the attorneys in the two sixteen, and we, we were abused in the press and social media of this, and it's because, well, we were, unfairly, I think, uh, because, uh, somebody wanted to be special so that they could decide to raise somebody or lower somebody at their, at their, at their whim, rather than what we enact in the budget every year. And then we had other departments with the new PTO coming in, we've got these lawyers, and, uh, they're being compensated at different levels, and we're still trying, having growing pains trying to work all that out, and so one of our goals has been, uh, to try to get everybody as standardized as possible so that it's predictable, that the lawyers in one department, if they're, if they're a prosecutor, they're making about the same, they make the same thing as the defenders make. If they're in the district attorney's office or the county attorney's office, we're trying to get things leveled out so that it's predictable instead of everybody being special. Heather doesn't get the choice of being special, because she's in the county, uh, and she has to, has to live with our stepping grades, okay? But our district attorneys, uh, and I, I don't mean this disrespect.
It's not just the DA's.
No, it's not just the DA's, but that, they wanna be treated special, they wanna have the flexibility of doing what they do, what, what they wanna do. And, and what we encountered, just to refresh everybody's recollection, we had one DA, if you remember, uh, we didn't, we didn't realize that we didn't have a first assistant DA, but we didn't, so we gave him a raise because it got promoted to first assistant, and then we gave him another raise, and, and all of this was at the recommendation of, of his superior, the district attorney. And we did all of that a few years ago, and we had like, it was almost twenty thousand dollars a year raise, uh, one attorney guy, uh, and then we had, uh, we had multiple attorneys in that department, and money was, uh, one salary was cut, and that cut was then added to the other, and they could do that because of the boilerplate language in the, in our budget says that you can, uh, decrease somebody, uh, and, and in that instance, which she was able to raise the other. And we, we tried to stay up with all the stuff, and so when she comes in with somebody, say, I got somebody new, and we need to pay them ninety-five thousand dollars, and we look bad because we're saying, well, look what you've done with all this other stuff, moved it back and forth.
At the time, we didn't really catch that immediately.
No, no, we had to learn this.
We had to learn that through the process.
Yes, we did.
It's a poor policy to either A, and everybody in business knows that if you got somebody that's a trouble employee, you cut their pay or whatever, and you, you don't fire them, but they walk away. So that's a bad policy to have in the county, that kind of stuff, what, what Commissioner Lutz was talking about, raise one, lower another one, all that playing favorite stuff, unlearn what they learn, come in and, and then they know where they're at, too. It's not fair to the employee to not know what might happen tomorrow if you fall out of favor.
And what we've tried to do, and I agree completely, I'm, I'm on the same page with you on that, Commissioner Blue, uh, is to come up with the equivalent of the step and grade, grade and step, for these exempt employees, so that we now are slotting in everybody, except for the elected officials, uh, into the step and grade system, uh, and everything becomes more standardized, and we know what lawyers in this district attorney's office, this county attorney's office, this P, this public defender's office are gonna make, uh, and try to take some of that, and I know that when, when you're the, the elected official or the head of that department, everybody loves flexibility, and we're trying to actually make this more standardized and less flexible than it was, to be fair to all concerned with the county.
That's the key word, fair.
The only thing I'll add to that is that with the step and grade policy currently, or the step and grade system, I think that a department head or elected official could come in and, and ask to remove a step, the grade you can't change, that's job description, but they could reduce it if they choose. Now, again, I think that's, I would, you know.
You saying that would have to be approved by the court?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
What we're saying is if we're gonna vary from what is the traditional step and grade for all county employees, it's done on a case-by-case basis before this court, and we sign off on it.
And it needs to be transparent, that really is a transparency thing, so we understand what's going on with that. The other thing, okay, let's.
Are you saying there will be no more exempt employees?
No, no, exempt, this is exempt, it's still exempt.
Okay, so my attorney's exempt, but my legal assistants and others will still be on step and grade?
Right. But in fact, we have legal assistants in some offices, well, the DA's, that are, they're in open range, their salaries are just out there within a range, they will be on the step and grade under the, if this changes next.
We ought to explain what the exempt employee status means for, uh, for the taxpayers to know.
I think exempt employees is basically federally defined largely.
It's out of our control.
To a degree, it's out of our control, um, basically, they're working, if you're not exempt, you work a forty-hour work week, if you work forty-one hours, you get an hour overtime. If you're exempt, you get paid, you may work eighty hours a week, and you may work twenty hours a week, you're getting paid the same amount. That's kind of, you know, the intent is, in the county, that everyone works, you know, you work a forty-hour work, that's what you're supposed to be doing.
But sometimes we'll call my attorneys on a Saturday or after hours, we have Sunday, and I'll just bill extra.
Well, when you say exempt, most people think, well, we don't have to follow the rules, what it really does, it kind of works against the employee.
It exempts overtime hours, yeah, that's what's exempted, you don't have to pay overtime for.
That's the summary.
And, and lawyers are the best example, and with the lawyers, we have ranges, and so that we know that a starting felony prosecutor or defender's gonna make X amount in any office, and same thing with senior, the senior felony prosecutors or defenders, misdemeanor, what have you, uh, and try to get it so that everybody knows, it's much more transparent, and it's much more predictable to know where you stand and what you can expect.
And our, the exempt employees, this won't be all of them, but their attorneys and department heads, that's kind of it, um, there, there might be a few others, uh, out there as well, and this doesn't count the sheriff's department, 'cause they're all under their own rules, it doesn't matter, which the sheriff runs all that, uh, but that's kind of, you know, the broad brush and stuff. The other thing is, is a consequence of doing this, uh, is that there will be some people that are way out of whack on the step and grade, um, and it's because, uh, just the way it's been done in the past.
It went too long and checked.
And as an example right now, and there's some things that we're gonna have to tweak, and there is a question at the end of this, is what direction we go, but one thing that's pretty simple is, the salary range for a felony prosecutor, the DA's, is perhaps at ninety-five thousand, in the PTO, it's a hundred thousand. I think we should make them both a hundred thousand, I mean, we should probably get them as close as we can, uniform, and probably have the breaks, uh, and that's pretty simple.
And just follow up, interruption, but, uh, it doesn't mean that we're raising anybody right now, it just means that we have the ability to raise them up there.
Or they, yeah, they have the ability, the department head.
There's no actual change.
But we also have a situation where legal assistants in the PTO right now are at a lower range than legal assistants in the DA's office, we need to get them in the same.
And the range that the salary study recommends.
Right, and.
That doesn't all come out of the county budget.
No, but it's, but it's, there's a lot of adjustments.
Our portion of it, of course, should be levelled up.
Yeah, but it, yeah, it's, but there's, we will come back at, at our next meeting when we go into the executive session, and just so everyone, Jennifer has a list of all these, I mean, some of them are pretty far off of where they should be, up or down, and we need to look at how we get there. You know, it may take a two-year process to get all the salaries kind of where they need to be, um, but it's a, there's a pretty big variance, up to twenty thousand dollars for some of these positions.
I have another concern, question, comment, um, there, that I've found so far, there's three departments that are not on the old longevity, new market adjustment plan, that both DA's and airport, because we do not pay them longevity, or we have them in the past, now we will, you know, the market adjustment, adjustment.
They should be, in my mind, they should all be included in our same policy.
I agree, yeah.
Okay, I will make that adjustment.
Now, so, so that the public and the employees understand, and, and I'm talking to the employees as much as I am the public about this, because we had a lot of confusion in the rank-and-file, and we're trying to get it cleared up, because this is still a great place to work, uh, and we wanna make sure that people understand that. But, but the talisman that's driving all of this was the salary study. We learned a great deal from the sal- salary study. And for those of us that complain, and I, I take credit for this, uh, we keep doing things the way we've always done it, simply because that's the way we've always done it. Well, we're actually in the personnel area this year, trying to make some improvements, uh, and not just keep doing things the way we've always done it, so.
May I?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I left and went to eat early, didn't know this was going to come up, but, was eating and watching it on YouTube and started hearing something about special and the DA and she, which leaves me as that person you're talking about. But, um, my, there was mentioned about my first assistant, his salary is at the mid-range or, um, it, it's within what the salary study found it should be, it's not above that. All my employees were within what the salary study recommended, none of them were at the top end, and one was a little bit below, I intended to keep her there, that particular person I felt, um, needed to be at that salary level.
Just to say, if you're gonna talk about individual employees that we identified, we really need to do it in the immediate executive session.
Okay, well, I'm not mentioning any names, but there, there was an employee that I had below what the s- salary study recommended, and I intentionally wanted to keep that employee at that salary range, and what I, the problem I have with the step and grade is that it rewards everybody the same, bad employees, good employees, mediocre employees, excellent employees, they, they're all gonna get their automatic raise. And what I did one year is I took basically the money that I had in my budget purse and redistributed it based not just on job duties and responsibilities, but on performance. And, and according to the budget study, it was all within the appropriate parameters, nobody was getting paid too much, one individual was getting paid below what the sal- salary study recommended, and, um, I quite frankly would've left that employee there, but under the salary study told that they're going to get bumped up, and that's fine with me, but that's my problem. I feel like I am in the best position to know how the staff at my office is doing, and who is worthy of, um, certain pay, and who is worthy of a pay increase, and who is not, just like I won't come in here and pretend to know anything about the commissioner's court staff or anybody else's staff, because I don't work with them, I don't know what their performance is like, I don't know what their attitude is like, and I think pay needs to be based on all of that, uh, not just everybody automatically gets increased, so, uh, bad employees are encouraged to stay because they're gonna continue to get increased. Now, you may say, well, fire them if you don't like it. Uh, yeah, that, that's an option, but I can tell you, the, the times I've thought about firing somebody, I've been told, um, that I need to have lots of, um, documentation, blah, 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 well, it's employment at will, and, uh, you know, you can get rid of people by suggesting new opportunities, uh, which is always the best way to do it, but sometimes those opportunities are not there, so, I'm just saying, I, that's why I want to be able to control how much I pay each staff member and each attorney within a range, which is what the salary study, um, did, it gave us a range. I'm not, nor would I ask for anybody to get paid outside that range, I'm just asking that I be allowed, um, to decide how much each one of my staff gets paid, uh, I can understand if you don't wanna do that with department heads that you hire, but I think with all elected officials in the county, those people were elected not just to do their statutory duties, but also to run their offices, so I think anybody that's elected should be able to, um, have a budget, and then they should decide how to distribute it, and maybe not all electeds want to do that, but, um, I wanna do that, I know that Stephen Harpold wants to do that, we sat down and talked to Commissioner Lutz yesterday, discussed with him why, uh, it's not because we're special or we want to be special, you know, we're, we're not even in the courthouse, nobody really sees, uh, what we do, how we do it, certainly, you're not in our office seeing what employees are exemplary, and which ones, I'm trying to encourage to kind of go on out the door now, um, so I think that's why it's important that employees. So I think that's why it's important that employees don't just automatically get a raise. I disagree with it. That's kind of the government way of doing things. I disagree with it. It's kind of out of my hands, but you know, a lot of times, y'all talk about being micromanaged by the state and that you, as the county, should be able to make decisions. Well, that's the way I feel about my office. I should be able to make decisions about my office, how it's run, and how much my employees get paid within a range. And according to the salary study, everybody in my office gets paid within that range. Nobody's even at the high end, including my first assistant, who has gotten substantial raises. But that's because even the salary study found that that's what he should be getting paid. And so I went in and on my own adjusted it. Had I not, I can tell you that I think one employee would be above what the salary study recommended for that employee's pay. So with that said, I'm just asking you to take that into consideration.
Lucy, as we talked yesterday, and we kind of ended the conversation, and we talked about, you may not have heard it on YouTube, but the option is still there for you to adjust them within the step. You could come to the court and request to say, and come back and say it'd be an executive session. I didn't say this employee needs to get moved down. The only change over you moving someone up or down is within the two caveats. One, salary, your total salary, which you agreed to stay within that. The other thing would be that it would be in a two and a half percent increase. It doesn't change your ability to do that. I don't think most departments would do it. The problem with not getting on the stepping grade and by having the flexibility, because I understand why you want it, is to move up is all of a sudden, we're looking at other departments, we're looking at salaries, because they're all public records, and all of a sudden, a legal assistant in your office is being paid more than legal assistant in the PDO. You may have one being paid a whole lot, maybe less, or at the low end and one at the high end. And you look at the experience levels and it causes other issues countywide. And that's why I really want to try to get everybody on the same system. It's not trying to micromanage your office, and I think you can still move employees up and down. I would be more open to it than I would be in the past, because I understand your logic. And I think you came to the court, you know, I can't say how the rest of the court's going to do. But you say, you have an employee that's not doing a very good job, you know, it, you know, it's, the decision, I would go along with your recommendation. You know, I don't know that, it's a difficult, you're the one that has to deal with that employee. I don't. So if you want to lower someone's salary, that's up to you.
And I've done that.
Right.
And I've not had an employee leave because of that.
Right.
I have done that, and I will do that. I mean, I think as elected officials who are charged with running an office, we have to make tough decisions. And that means cutting somebody's salary to compensate somebody else that needs to be compensated more, and that person needs to be compensated less, and that's what you do. And you hope that they understand, and if they don't, then, they don't.
But I think that the, I don't think that it, putting them on second grade, I don't think changes anything in how you manage your employees and they get paid, they're still paid within the ranges. To me, it doesn't change anything.
Well, the question that comes up in my mind is, is every new employee entered in a certain step?
Grade.
And grade or grade, and with no control of that with the elected official. So if that's going to be the case, then that might change things a little.
Well, I think that we have done in the past, I mean, our policy is a new employee comes in at a step one. But we have made many exceptions where someone comes in with, you know.
Lot of experience.
A lot of experience.
Recently.
Right, and we come in at a five, because they had a lot of experience in that job, so.
So if there's not going to be a policy that all new employees in this department come in at this.
No, it doesn't seem.
Then, then there's not, I don't see a problem. You can still hire people.
You have to, you come in at a one unless you come to the court and say, hey.
This person's exceptional, it's a good.
Because we, it's, yeah.
Which we give recently.
And I think we've gone along with that. And with the exempt employees, there's a range there, you know, that there's pretty broad discretion, and it's mostly attorneys, because the DAs and the chief prosecutor, they know what they need. They know the difference, they know the experience they're looking for, the expertise they're looking for, and that's totally up to them within that salary range.
And as I mentioned yesterday, sometimes experience does not mean more quality work. I was telling Jonathan, I know when I started, my first five, seven, ten years, man, I was on fire because I was obsessed with it. I went home and I didn't read magazines or watch TV. I read the criminal procedure and the penal code. I read case law. And I still love what I do, don't get me wrong, but sometimes, you know, young blood is a good thing. And I can tell you that John Hoover with seven years' experience is exceptional. You know, he just became board certified in criminal law. He got his results on Friday. He was the second highest bar scorer. He's got good judgment. And he's excellent. So I need to be able to base salary based on that. And I think I've been reasonable in that he's not topped off at the very, very top, although I think he deserves it.
Lucy, we can't talk about individuals.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
You can't talk about individuals.
Yeah, Lucy, we need to move on to a bunch of other things, too.
Okay, well, I just wanted to be heard. I was on YouTube and spit my taco out and jumped in the kitchen, came over, because I just wanted to hear my position.
You said we're kind of handling this like government stuff. That's what this is. So I just want to clarify that, you know, as much as I don't like it either, I get it. This is government, so.
And I understand that, but that's not what the salary study recommended. They recommended that, I know at least my office in the 198th, I don't know about what other offices they recommended remain on open range, but the salary study that the commissioner's court commissioned actually recommends that our offices stay on the open range, not.
I believe the salary study was not asked to look at that specifically.
I'm sorry?
They didn't, they were not, the salary study was not charged with looking at that part of it. They looked at salaries and left them the way they were.
Well, I know that the reports is that they recommended it be.
Right, because that's the way it was. That was, their scope was not to do this. And it was, it would have been, if I would have realized how many employees we had on open range, you know, to help right the scope, but it really, it was, that issue was not addressed by the salary, that the dollar amounts were looked at and the employees were within the range that were on the open range or not stepping.
Okay, well, I'm just basing on what the salary study said, and that is that it specifically said that it should be, it recommended that they be looked on the open range.
Right, and that's correct.
What you can do is that anybody that is exempt, is exempt or that is not on their set term, they assign a grade.
Yes.
So exempt.
You can reward with grades and steps, and you can demote with grades and steps. You can change job descriptions. There's all kinds of flexibility within the grade and step system.
Should they have, for those that are on the second grade, they have these comparisons, so they still assign a grade.
Right, thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. What next?
Overall.
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 Now, can I, can I clarify something before we get to the overall? We asked on the sixth, there was an item in here, it was fourteen thousand dollars for first responder, trip regulators. And I talked with the.
Eric Maloney?
Yeah, I was going to thank the chief at the purple car department, and they are two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars each. This is, let's see, he says, if we need to, we can reduce that by a total of three of those units, but they need them. And I would say we just leave it as it is. It's fourteen thousand dollars. We got a clarification on what it is and why we need them. And we didn't change anything, but I thought the court should know because it was a question.
Okay, thanks.
All the way to.
We needed that from the court. What else we have, Daniel?
Page sixteen, department requested budget summary.
And is it possible, I know it's possible, but could we, all right? Look, on this summary, we don't get to see the previous years versus what's being requested. Like we do in all departments and everything, all the other lines, but when we get down to the bottom line, I'd like to see a comparison.
That'd be good.
Certainly.
Sort of same format, because that, anyway, that would be helpful.
Are you, just for clarification, are you okay with us printing this that was?
No, I'm just for clarification, I think it would be helpful to see that. That's all I'm saying right now. Now, back to page sixteen.
Any of the questions she's having is for every column or just the estimated, the final column?
Just the final column, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay. I was, I was just going to print this from what's, the whole thing.
I'm sorry, yeah, thank, thank you. Yeah, just final.
So this is the final column for 2020, 2019?
Yeah, right, right. Sort of the actual versus, sort of the actual what being finally requested.
I agree.
The net change to fund balance?
Yeah.
Column, certainly.
Yeah.
So in putting everything together on what's been requested, currently, we stand at a net change to fund balance, that's the third line, column from the end, of spending four point three million basically more than the revenues right now.
Okay.
Now, the positive part of that is we will still end the year with almost twenty-six percent in fund balance.
And refresh my recollection, on my proposed budget, we start off with a deficit of how much?
Hundred and seventy-nine.
So Judge Kelly's proposed budget is on page seventeen. This was as of four twenty-six. And the net change to fund balance was a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars more than the revenues.
So we're spending four million dollars, more or less, of the fund balance we have.
Part, part of that is the difference, if you'll look at, it's almost in the middle of the page.
On sixteen?
On sixteen, we can start there. And the requested for twenty-one, twenty-two non-recurring expenditures.
Yep.
So it's about three point seven million under the department requested. And on Judge Kelly's, that was the one point six million.
And those, that's the road repair of Grand Royal Road, eight hundred and sixteen thousand for computer or for IT, it's those big ticket items.
The majority of that are, is correct, your big ticket items.
Exactly.
Okay, so on page sixteen, look at fund balance, that's the very bottom, lower right-hand corner. It's like twenty-six percent.
Yes, sir.
And our objective is twenty-five percent.
Yes, sir.
Okay? And on the recommended, same thing, it's thirty-one percent versus thirty-one percent, so.
Yes, sir.
And to keep the apple-to-apple comparison there, we started with about, our initial starting fund balance was a little over thirty-eight percent.
Right, right.
And I was recommending we take it down to, oh, just a little over thirty percent, thirty-four percent.
Correct, correct.
And we're ending up at twenty-six percent.
Right.
And so, but so that the public understands, we're taking the money that we did not spend last year that went into fund balance, and spending four million dollars of that as budget items this year.
Correct, correct.
On mainly big-ticket items.
Right, right.
And non-recurring, these are kind of, this is, the purpose of building a reserve is that you can out of a one-year budget do a major project.
But it's like spending our savings.
I think another, another thing for the public to realize, too, is the actuals from 2021, in total requested, total requested sales in the budget was forty-two point six million. This year, its requested is forty-three million. So it's, it's saying, everybody's doing a really good job of staying within the budget and staying within twenty-five percent reserved, so. Which is good.
One other thing I would like to point out is we just this week received our certified role from the central appraisal district. Tax assessor collector Bob Reeves and I will be meeting tomorrow. We, so there may be some changes to the estimated tax revenue. Even spending this at this point, this is using last year's dollars to fund this. So there, there still, in these numbers, it does not show a property increase.
Right.
From property taxes.
Right.
I want to clarify, any new property values.
New property, not tax for, yeah.
New property values, that does not include that as well as lost property values that factor into the tax rate.
Right.
In other words, properties that have become exempt.
Correct.
Properties that have received the first-time special use agricultural valuation. There's a difference between extensions and that, just to point out. So, clearly, we have to look at that. And tomorrow will only be the first step, and it will be a multi-week process.
Right.
Okay.
And to use a metaphor here, if we're looking down at this budget from ten thousand feet in a helicopter, what we're seeing is what we're talking about right here. But if we go up a little bit higher, twenty thousand feet, we can see that even though we're spending the monies that we brought in last year, we're still probably not looking at any tax rate hike, and depending on how much new revenues we have, we may actually have to cut the tax rate. Is that right?
Yeah, but we may be able to cut.
But the point being, I mean, I agree with that, and I apologize. But the public needs to know that we're not looking at any type of tax rate increase with where we are right now, more than likely. I hope that's what we're looking at.
Right, right.
And if, and if we are, then we need to come back and sharpen our business.
And today's terminology may be, we're trying to use the no new revenue rate.
That's correct.
Right.
Of tax.
Right.
Yeah.
Correct. Okay.
And just to clarify, on the employee side, the one and a half percent increase for employees is included in these numbers?
It is included.
And all of the adjustments under the salary study are included?
Yes, I think there's some tweaks, but we feel like we have enough money in here to cover it, basically.
So bottom line with this budget, if we do everything that's been proposed right here, we've made a quantum leap forward in our capital investments and improvements. We've made a quantum leap forward in repairing what was a spotty personnel policy, trying to shore that up, and still be able to not, hopefully, not have to raise the tax rate, standard of no new tax rate.
Correct, correct.
So.
Do you have a card or a minute?
So if we're looking at where we are now, unless there's any other questions, we've got another budget workshop scheduled for July nineteenth, which is Monday.
Mm-hmm.
And we discussed a little bit, the radio, so that workshop, I guess, will be set up soon.
It's a different workshop.
No, that's, that workshop is going to be grant-driven and not budget-driven.
Okay. And the flood control, we discussed that today. We'll get the number from Charlie and put the numbers in this. And then, so Monday, that leaves the PDO.
And that gets to the PDO. And this is a question, do we need, I can explain where we are with the PDO. We don't have a number yet, which is why it hasn't been done yet. The PDO is largely grant-driven. Two things have happened. TIDC has come and said that we can extend the original grant instead of having it run out September thirtieth. They will extend it three more months because we got a little bit of a late start.
Okay.
It causes some challenges also because of numbers and all that. The, so the next year's grant will be a nine-month grant, but we're figuring that on an annual basis, because that's kind of what we're going forward with. It is, it appears right now, based on the salaries and he's hiring within the ranges and the needs and utilities and all that, that it's going to, the grant request will likely come in about four hundred thousand higher, I think it's, somewhere in the four hundred thousand dollar range. And that's, that will be a sixty-six, thirty-three percent, and the counties, the five counties will then split it up to thirty-three percent. And that includes, well, offsetting that, per county anyway, the rent for the five fifty building is in the grant, so we get a part of that back.
Okay. And just to clarify, the first-year grant is an eighty-twenty grant, eighty percent from the state, twenty percent from the five counties, which is all allocated, shared. They extended that by three months because we didn't spend anything the last quarter of this fiscal year, last year. We didn't bring them on board until January one. And so I think the state's being very generous with us to give us that three months on the back end on an eighty-twenty match rather than the two-thirds, one-third match, which is what the new grant's going to be. But it's only going to be for nine months. But it's only going to be for nine months, but it's probably going to be $400,000 more in comparison to what it was for the nine months previous to now.
Well, the annual part will be 400,000.
So the timeline is what I'm interested in. It'll be three months, so it'll end basically at the end of the, this year.
December 3rd.
And it'll start at the beginning of next year and run for.
Nine months.
Nine months.
And then the next one will be 12 months.
And years two, three, and four are already predetermined after 1/32.
And that's just to get us back on fiscal budget?
Yeah, because we get those in line.
That nine months.
Yeah, nine months.
But it saves the five counties by, TIDC doing this, that difference between 20% that we had to pay and 33% is almost $500,000. So it's a huge benefit to the, to us to get that. The question is, do we want to have a workshop on Monday to go over that in detail or just, I mean, it doesn't sound like we have any other reason to have a workshop other than PDO.
Or other than just the summary.
When are we going to do the communication workshop?
It's not in the budget.
It's not the budget.
Sheriff and I are going to be, that is, we're trying to tie that to the American Rescue Plan.
And that's not a budget item.
And we're going to get together and talk about it, but not in the budget cycle. It's not in the budget, that's not going to be in this FY 21, '22 budget.
And you could just send us, instead of having a workshop, you could just send us the updated bottom line.
I can do that, yes, sir.
Okay.
And the PDO is, it's grant-driven, and the numbers are coming in a little bit higher because of a lot of different departments, the rent, you know, trying to figure in utilities, we've gone back and looked at utilities for the building. I mean, I don't see a whole lot of purpose. I'd be glad to go over line by line on them, but it's, Daniel and I are meeting daily on it, appears, and John Bull and I and his office are meeting daily.
So cancel Mondays?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got something else on Monday, don't we?
We do have a special meeting on Monday, that is at 1:30 to discuss sentences and redistributes.
Right.
Also, we need you there on Monday.
So we're going to do that, we're going to do that 1:30 on Monday?
On Friday, Monday.
So I got to work with juvenile on.
Gratitude on Monday.
Okay. And one?
So, we'll cancel the 9:30 workshop, the 9 o'clock workshop.
Well, it's going to be 2 o'clock workshop.
Okay, we'll cancel 2 o'clock.
Okay.
We'll have 1:30.
But we have 1:30, and that's Chuck Kimbrough's going to come talk to us about redistributing.
So one, one more topic that we may need to consider and flesh out a little bit is we haven't discussed employee mileage, the in-county mileage. That's the only topic that I'm aware of that has not been discussed.
I'm not in favor of paying the county mileage.
I thought, I thought we decided that.
I thought we were.
Okay, just clarify.
To me, we will, we need to, going forward, get more vehicles available.
That was what we decided.
So we need to visit with, pretty the sheriff department or with a lease company to see if we can get some of the, you know, some of them, maybe they don't take credit in that we have, if we need them. And I think we need to do a check with, you know, the question came from JP.
Four.
JP.
Well, the tax office.
JP four primary was the one that came for it. And to me, my solution is that they need a car, we need to sign a car out there. And I think we need to contact them and figure out where the cars need to be, and maybe we need a few more pool cars, things like elections and things like that. But I think that's a better solution than start by crack modeling.
What about that van with no door handles on it?
Hey, put a lot of election equipment in that.
Put a lot of election in that.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a bad, bad option. We kind of look at, from the lease standpoint, what is the best thing for us to keep? I mean, let's, you know, keep the lowest credit value or something, you know?
Yeah, that's probably down there in the basement.
Okay. Okay. Anything else for today?
No, sir, I do not have anything else.
Then we are adjourned.